Alright, so I just have one comment for tonight. That's just, let's all keep a level head here tonight. Stressful for everyone, so that's all my comments is. Roll call at the record reflect that all members are accounted for here, present and everything else. Next, I'll go for approval of agenda.
I'll second.
It was moved by Director Gerard, seconded by Director Lang, to approve the amend all, to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Um, I would actually like to amend the agenda to add to the discussion items at um, or for getting uh formative evaluation on the calendar.
That'll be item O, under discussion. Formative. Here, that's it.
Cheers, I'd like to uh have a personal question.
You go ahead.
I'll be uh, I'll submit this.
You want that under discussion?
Can you speak into the mic please, stop? Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, item P, under discussion, will be policy test. Any other thing to add or remove from the agenda? Director Gerard, are you okay with still moving this forward?
I'd like to move that, approve the agenda as amended.
Alright.
I'll second.
Alright. It was moved by Director Gerard, and seconded by Director Lang, to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? All who abstain. Motion passed six zero zero. Appreciation, recognition, and presentation.
I have nobody at this time. Do the principal have anyone?
Alright, that's none of that. Recognition of citizens for input purposes. Oh, did I, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Approval of minutes. So you wanna move that?
I'll move that.
I'll second. It was moved by Director Holm and seconded by Director Petron to approve the minutes from, I don't even, I don't have the. July twenty seventh, the meeting, and the August fourth, all school.
Yeah, but they don't give.
Did you say July twenty seventh, August fourth?
Correct.
Alright. Uh, it was moved by Director Holm, seconded by Director Petron to approve the minutes from the July twenty seventh regular meeting and the August fourth special meeting. Any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? All abstain. Motion passed six zero zero. Now we're gonna move on to recognition of citizens for input purposes. Anybody wanna say anything? You, you can talk later too, it's not like speaking now forever, hold your keys, but. Anybody got anything? Alright, we'll move on. Reports and news, our committee reports. Oh, probably forgot a committee report. Business, business managers report.
I'm gonna keep it short. Um, I am, the state has finally corrected the errors, um, but they had a more edited, our, our ordinary far style, so I feel I have a point where I can help finance the meeting, because my finances need some payment. So I just want you guys to think about the date that looks for you and then get back to me. I'd also like Director Garrett, Garrett's there for good because you are the treasurer. So if you wanna keep that in mind, just think about that, we can come up with a meet, a date sometime in the week or something, that also, so, or another plan where we can start having a finance meeting.
Point of order, we will have to advertise that as the special meeting, because it'll be more than three, one membership. Unless one, one member does want it again.
Yeah.
Anything else?
This is such a.
Alright. Superintendent report?
Yeah, we've met several times, uh, as the leadership group, we've also met with the cabinet, on just moving forward with everything. It hasn't been easy, and Dawn has been under added stress because she thinks she has everything in central to the state. And because for one reason or another, the state has had problems figuring out, that puts her on hold with us everything else, and I want you to be very aware of that. Because that, that's been very, very difficult for, and added stress with everything else, trying to make budgets work, and giving added money from the state to go ahead to schools.
Have they been understanding at all, I'd like.
They?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, while it's their air. They don't return, they don't get to call, everything's like, you know, so.
Oh, yeah.
Of course they're understanding, they just don't reply.
Anything else?
That's all I have at this time.
Okay. Prizzle Bowls reports?
Working hard to everybody get ready to see her. Parents, we weren't doing those calls. It started uh, we modified, like, integrating first grade. They all said, like, more of an app, they took another district. Getting away from this virtual, both the, exciting to do, both uh individual, parent teachers to conference. All day when they able to call us, and what would have been the first day of school have that all. Unadulled wants to come in, teach your, uh, maybe words to fill out, hear some ideas and then off the building. I think people are gonna appreciate the opportunity to take contact with teachers. I think that's safely, that's what changed, and some of the things that are happening is just, to meet together and talk. Each other, ideas come up.
What was the dates for that again, Phil, just in case people ask? What days it'll be the first day?
Wednesday and next week, that's smart way to build calls. Days, we'll start conferences in the morning, going into the evening, we have lots of spots, full, we have choices. And then, the next, separate, the first day, do the same thing all conferences, and start Wednesday, Thursday at school.
What brings them?
The uh, these schools can create five. They just want to bring it out and make sure.
You're doing a big push to get it out to people, so they know that?
Yeah, uh, school messenger, message, I hope, why are you being, and we'll have directions, probably, you can sign up for the conferences. Skyward, it'll be the same format we use for conferences, very regular, so you're, a lot of people are gonna be there. But then, follow up, people don't sign up, like, it is close to a hundred percent.
Yeah, and you should pay special attention to who families is the district.
Yeah.
And your mom is in back here.
So well, you're so. Anything that you don't know?
Well, you will know, because when you go to Skyward, it's supposed to. So you should know, yeah. We just gotta make sure we have the system. That's working.
Okay, you got that, Phil?
Yes.
Okay, middle school, high school?
Uh, we're doing six grades, only over all signs, this is number seven, uh, from five thirty to thirty. We broke up this uh evening, coming six ten, we're going to, so. So, we have three teachers, given four more on block hours, uh, interest class schedule. I will make myself available for my parents' want to get those questions. Teachers, thirteen, thirteen, open. And then we will also have a, uh, that evening, seven, ten, seven, three. We're wanting to get it to the building, and I checked it out, so, um. Our awesome, this is number two, despite whatever E outputs, party monitors, calendar is. Those school, high school, all students important part of the class, not just kids, it's a community. I am understanding that with a couple of, cater that, that's been a little, you know, the first case. I'm also, or it's not, I'm not sure where they got the info.
I bu, I believe they uh, just used the calendar that we had, that's all they did. They didn't call and check.
So, I've had calls, it's a great nature calls and playlists.
Okay, so in place, we have this, all have different classes, north west, that's very, or, or. We don't have a uniform supply list for all students, so, also, I tell parents, usually, they will basis, specific. That they will need for the class, first fee, so, teacher will let them know if they have time for the needed class. Uh, but, that would be ten pages long, that I just.
Sure. I didn't know how to ask, no idea. Do you have any? Any questions for him?
I have here, one more here, one more here. Uh, as of right now, we received refund from, um, Cruz Company, the Travel Company, um, which your provider refund of, sort of, uh, possible advantages. Uh, as of right now, we are waiting on airline, uh, airline wants to develop culture for everyone that had airline tickets, that's the, probably, the 21. Uh, with, we're getting, yes, a lot of not really decided, but, um, airplane, plane, plane, good. Uh, work with the airline to see if they're, send it out. And see if we can get a better deal for our families. Let's hammer, yeah, right now, we are excited by that, that, uh, some of the big ones, for student travel companies, trust, company, their. World Stride is one of them, to work with, that's one of the major ones, kind of, proceeds, uh, main numbers. So, if you would have been with World Stride, you'd be probably, you know. Feel fortunate that we're able to get something back to families, and, uh, continue to work on, to be, to get a better deal on the air service.
Yes.
Uh, what reliance?
On concrete.
Anything else? Alright, moving on.
Alright, um. A bit short, now we're looking in, uh, you know, the whole course, and kind of put on hold, uh, the whole, uh, to last night's spring, you don't know the dates on that. That area, we're all looking back, the winter sports, and those are spring sports, and all of them, they started. Uh, both dates are not set, uh, hopefully, we got overboard, we can price the date, you know. We did try to do before, the date suggestion in the spring, is we do have baseball, and we'll stop all this fall. So, uh, we just will open up tomorrow, and then we'll start like, second day of school practice, play, no, that is at onsite, um, for a safety conference. We can, we can check this, I'm, that's all, for the eight week.
Any other questions for him?
How many days is that, uh, the April from the start? How many April? I'm telling you, I have four days. So, the, the, you look up, there's lots of, much, there's, for just, uh, the agreement for swimming, girls' swimming, with, uh, new balls, pelvis, your hobby. Uh, that is just, uh, sets the parameters, a lot, uh, that you can only sign the application good, um. And this is kind of set the, for participants cost, over, but now, I don't want anybody signed up, girls' swimming, um. But, so, at that, you wouldn't be, you know, anything over there, you have to pay to, put it on our schedule, the ice. That's all, that's all I thought we needed.
Alright. Moving into discussion, information and action items. Names of council financials.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion. It was moved by Director Holm and seconded by Director Garrett, to approve the names of council financials. There any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? All who abstain. Motion passed six zero zero. Not bread and fuel with bits.
I don't put, uh, Dawn might want to. Dawn? Food and fuel bits?
Oh, yes, uh, we did get our written, um, I don't, we never opened my convenience, uh, it's thirteen. Um, we received bits from, from bread, um, we did, we sent out bits to Earth Rains, and, and Gold. Earth Rains came back with no bit, and Hannah obviously didn't have a bit, the, a more winner receiving, by default, um, we, um, sent out bits to teams, food, fast play, it comes. Team food brought back bit, with no bit, and fast play with the same thing, sometimes by default, won't happen. And for my, um, you all, we sent out to Lanes, and San Francisco, San Francisco, yeah, and San Francisco, Lanes, it was, yeah, San Francisco, one by default. So, those are the twenty twenty one bits, that we not required to do by law.
You wanna move that?
I'll make a motion to do.
I'll second.
It was moved by Director Garrett and seconded by Director Gerard to approve the health, bread, and fuel bits. Camps, the milk, the, center sort of, fuel, and, and a gold was the bread bit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? All who abstain. They passed six zero zero. The agreement of cooperative sponsorship for girls' swimming program, Tony spoke to that. It was moved by Director Petron and seconded by Director Lang to approve the agreement of cooperative sponsorship for a girls' swimming program. Any discussion?
Did you say that nobody signed up for it?
Yeah, I have a registration that nobody, I think there is asking, uh, the seven ball program, people ask. Uh, nobody, nobody actually registered for it. Uh, one of the things that we have to do for our cooperative sponsorship, uh, whole school is, for low on bus drivers, for low on, on vehicles. We can't transport people to, to low falls for that, uh, which makes people more hesitant, because they have to go to work, they have to buy the license. And, uh, so there's interest, it's just. And, and to your agreements, the building is pretty formal, and a lot of people figure out, um, download, it's a, it's a lot of power.
So, did we already spend the hundred forty five dollars?
Yep.
We got zero dispense.
Yeah, you don't have, you have to pay nicely, of course, you have to pay into the office. They're not gonna give us any money back, they, they're, they're needing for, uh, you can't just, it's, it's worse, like, that's, we need money back, for answers, no.
Of course it is.
Very helpful, so.
Of course. Alright, it was moved by Director Petron and seconded by Director Lang, to agree, for the agreement of the cooperative sponsorship of the girls' swimming program. Any other discussion? Here you go, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? All who abstain. Motion passed six zero zero. Approval of lawyers, the Routh and School Board will, all hires based upon the findings, each individual's background check, license, your status, and discipline. Report from the municipal department of education. We have Lake Matheson, high school Spanish, Bethany Suminski, art para professional. Jesse Youngren, custodian, Melissa Poser, assistant cross country coach, Ashley Ben Heel, district nurse. Is any of the people here?
I'll get to it.
Okay. Do you wanna move that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. It was moved by Director Garrett and seconded by Director Gerard. No, strike that. It was, moved by Director Gerard and seconded by Director Garrett, to hire Lake Matheson, high school Spanish teacher, Bethany Suminski, art para professional. Jesse Youngren, custodian, Melissa Poser, assistant co, cross country coach, and Ashley Ben Heel, district nurse. Any discussion? Yes?
Mr. Chair, Rick, I asked a question earlier, but, um, can you explain that again? Have we ever had that there?
No, um, with COVID happening, um, we have, we will have some situations with, um, distance learning, being applicable in certain situations without going into great detail, um, we do have our art teacher that will be teaching remotely, and then the para will be in the room to assist and, while the teacher is teaching. She, there's, um, I don't, can't go into great detail, but she, she, there's some, there's some compromise that you do, and with COVID, so, she is willing to teach remotely, she's just not allowed to be in COVID. She feels unsafe.
Okay, so, I don't know, I've been asking this question a lot lately, up here, everywhere else, so, when does this end, when the peacetime emergency ends?
Well, every situation is unique, I'm not, I have, been spending, uh, good, this time in lockdown, since I got COVID, and was, uh, turning into the adult representation. So we are, we're trying to be, and saving ourselves some lives, so, um. We can do receptions, however, if it creates some hardship for the district, then, then that individual will be.
But I mean, I'm just. At, at some point, I assume that this peacetime emergency is gonna either get overruled, run out of time, get replaced with the law, something's gonna happen, I mean. If, if, if before that happened, if it got removed, would that mean that everything just gets repealed and goes back, or, I mean, I.
No, I don't see that, I see this year, twenty, twenty twenty one school year will be very problematic. I don't see anything changing in this whole school year. I think once legislature comes in, depending on what cases there are, in the spring, I think there'll be more decisions, but, I, I, John can probably speak to it, but I don't see anything.
Well, I don't see this COVID being any different than, uh, school safety. You know, as long as there's not a lot of cases around, you're gonna be pretty lax, and as soon as there's a school shooting, and as soon as there's a school that's forty miles away that blows up, but then all of a sudden, everybody's gonna come out and do it. Unfortunately, it's just, it's what we live in, but I just, sometimes I really wonder, I mean, right now, the peacetime emergency is one person's opinion. Doesn't mean they're right one day and wrong the next, I don't know, just, that was a question I had, so.
I.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, if this person did here, for COVID or after COVID, and this person been hired, who decides?
This, this individual was already in the school system, um, we're following the book on any requests for, uh, anyone to be in remote learning. Matter of fact, I wouldn't be if it's, the board has links, that we are going by the book on these things, uh, literally, there is a book. Lawyers, days of study, uh, and Dawn has done most of that, and one with Susan's been there also, to make sure they got all the bases covered. And they're going through it very carefully, in this case, the choice was, we could hire a para that has some art background, that's correct, isn't it, Joel? And do a remote learning and observation with the teacher, or we could hire another full-time teacher to go with. And, uh, collaborating with Joel, uh, both of us felt with the individual that, uh, possibility, that that would be a better choice to do apparel. If this ends sometime, we can let the para go and move in the.
That was, so, there's no full year commitment for that?
I. Is he a full year?
Full year, as a full year.
So, are we talking elementary or high school?
High school. And, uh.
Go ahead.
So, a teacher, who's free?
No, you have to have reasons, you have to have medical reasons, I don't think I'm stepping over the line with that. Um, it's gotta be warranted for explicit reasons, and this fits every criteria we have. Otherwise, we would not have offered it.
Yeah, that was my next question, so if anybody else is, come in, then we have to hire someone?
And ADA, and Department of Labor, and the Department of Human Services, Human Rights, give us explicit direction on, on health bits, and generally, it's that individual, and this individual met all the criteria. The one thing I, like I did say, it creates some hardship for the district, and it's, um, this wasn't all right, but they do a lot of same combination for, for people, individuals. Which is, was an all right, but they do love saying combination for, for people, individuals that do that.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
How many years have they been?
I think, uh.
Six?
Ten, twelve.
Oh, good. Not all qualified.
Right. Like to have a public health background.
Alright, let me read it one more time. So, it was moved by Director Gerard and seconded by Director Garrett to hire Lake Matheson, Bethany Siminski, Jesse Youngren, Melissa Poser and Ashley Van Heel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passes six zero zero. Approval of resignations. I'll move that.
I'll second.
It was moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Lane to approve the resignations of Ashley Brits, the nurse, Caitlin Opdahl, Spanish teacher, Becky Klebs, bus driver. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passes six zero zero. Approval of FMLA absence, Tammy Shamet, kindergarten teacher. I'll move that again. Moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Gerard to approve the FMLA absence of Tammy Shamet, kindergarten teacher. Any discussion?
I'm on top four. Probably even kind of.
Alright. Yeah, we'll use this topic. Alright, are we good to vote then? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passes six zero zero. Policy readings, first reading to public participation in school board meetings.
Do you like put that up there, please, Susan?
And then the wellness. This is for everybody that, that comes to these meetings. When we read these things, we read them three times for gold on them. We're looking for people to complain about them because this is our chance to change the way the school runs. How you do it is by policy. You want something changed, you gotta change your policy and then they have to follow it. So, that's where your power is, is to get into your voice into our ears and then we can do stuff. So. Second reading policies is information technology. School weapons policy. Fledge of Allegiance. Public data request. Public data request form.
I do wanna say one thing, and then we talked about putting in, uh, the different ones. Like they said, there were too many pages of them and what's recommended to us, that, uh, then we'd have to go in and change the policy every time there was to change. And according to, I didn't watch, they don't did, but she said they change the length quite frequently. So it's better to have that as like a added attend, uh, attachment or appendage, that this is in there. Uh, the way through it, I'm going, wow. Uh, it's quite a bit.
So.
Go ahead.
When you say this is in there, in, like a webpage with?
Yes, when we do it, we'll copy this off, put it along with it, saying, you know, just what these are, which are the different, uh, lengths, that different, uh, applications for data are.
Even if the language is not just school, all public employees are all, whether it's for that investigation, responding personnel, I mean, so I think it has all criteria.
Yeah, I think maybe you, thinking like if I was a citizen and I wanted to post some information. Do you have that big document there down to the part that applies to?
Yeah, I can narrow it down. I don't have a problem.
Not to say if you want it through.
Absolutely. Okay, yep. So, when we're in our policy meeting. We need, we need to update, uh, data on some of these things. Five oh two is search of student lockers and desks, five twenty-one is the student disability and non-discrimination. Uh, we're gonna do that by consensus, so, so just need to get them approved, there's no changes there. Um, and seven fifty actually shouldn't be, because it was replaced by five thirty-four, it's almost exactly the same policy, but some changes. Uh, in August of two thousand seventeen, so it shouldn't have been in there anyhow, so. What do we need to approve now? We need to move it or not?
Yes, just a general vote, not first, to accept a review. That's one of the votes, and then to, uh, get rid of seven fifty because it's obsolete.
Uh, I'll move the, get rid of, or to accept the reviews of five oh two and five twenty-one.
I'll second.
It was moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Lane to approve. Policies five oh two and five twenty-one, any discussion? Yes, so was five two four, what do you know, we're not, is that, is that coming or isn't it? We're not doing that one yet. It, it's, so when seven fifty got replaced by five thirty-four, there's some, there's just like two little things that they're in. Uh, what do you call that in law? They dispute each other. One policy is one thing, one policy is the other thing. So, we need to get rid of the old policy because.
So if we wanna change five thirty-four, we'll do it.
Yeah, we'll review it.
Can I, can I have a copy that comes up of the, uh, this next one?
Everybody got here? It was moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Lane to approve five oh two and five twenty-one policies. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passes six zero zero.
I have a message, sorry. Please tell all board members to speak into their mic because soon nobody can hear you. Thank you.
I'm Mark, but not you. Mary, you bet right on it. Russ? Ellie?
Alright. Um, somebody wanna move policy seven fifty to, to, uh, get rid of it?
I will.
Okay, go right ahead. I'll second. Okay. It was moved by Director Home, seconded by Director Garrett to retire policy seven fifty. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passes six zero zero. Alright.
I know we discussed putting the, uh, surgeon locker, staff personal possessions, person in the handbook.
I, I believe he did, I asked him, got to put the whole policy, because that would make it, but he took out that key part, he would have did.
School openings scenario.
Can you put that, uh, website up for me? Yes, um, with all the information that we've had, uh, and we were not supposed to vote on this until now, the twenty-fourth is when they told us to vote. I know some other schools did, and you could see what the governor said this last week. Uh, the committee feels and all the data shows that Royalton Public Schools should be open in person where. And I need that vote by the school board tonight, obviously, if there's a discussion, we need to discuss it.
I move to, uh, open schools, fold in school learning. I'll second. Is there any discussion?
Um, just for, just for discussion, uh, right now the numbers are good. Do you have trigger points or when you're gonna start on the plan?
Abs- absolutely, and that's part of the next part. Yeah, the state set that up, so, for example, if we go greater than ten per ten thousand, then what would happen is, is we review it as a COVID committee. And then there would be a, uh, reaction by the incident, that's what it answers, the incident committee, which is made up of, uh, a board member. Uh, which is Russ, he's, he's wanted by default, I think, at, uh, what committee that we had. And, uh, by a parent, by other members on that committee, single from, uh, both, uh, the unions. And that they come together, present it to the school board. If the school board, uh, has an opportunity, if it's a really a rush job, we can't, then it would be a matter of taking that recommendation with Russ and with, uh, uh, Randy and myself. And we would put it into action if it was a rush time. For example, if we had a hotspot here at Royalton. One of the most important things in, in the information we get is information from Beth, where, where thirty percent of our people, uh, our students reside. They come in from Beth, Randy's a good example of one of those, uh, and they start at the end of the ball fields down here, Beth, because they're in communication with Morrison County. And they tell us where the hotspots are in our district. So, while Morrison might be up, we might take a look at ours and say, it doesn't deserve it now. It could be as specific as one school. That we might have to do a distance learning in one school.
So, just for everybody that don't know what's been set up, there is a designated person in each county that is the tracking official for this information. So, you know, Morrison County is a very large county. Um, there's a, there's a good chance that a school north of grain or by Brainerd up there could happen. We're far enough away, but they're gonna decide whether, whether we meet those parameters or not. It's not just a local decision, they're gonna, they're gonna tell us what the numbers are, because hopefully have all the information to do it. That's, that's where the numbers are coming from. It's not, not something, somebody's just, well, I heard that Betsy Sue had it, and, you know, it's, it's all coming from reliable test data.
Yeah, uh, and that's the region you're talking about, that we have the, uh, county, uh, health director is part of that. He keeps us informed twice a week on Mondays and on, on Thursday. And Thursdays, we get Beth and county in with that to make our decisions. Uh, when we get to the, the next part, I will show you the whole, the ball wraps.
Yes, you have a question?
Yeah.
There is a protocol.
John, let me, oh, go ahead. So the question is, will the, will the parents or the people that are in this school be notified if there's a case in the school? What I'd answer.
Um, what, what is supposed to happen at work, getting more direction, I believe this week they will have it, because that has changed. Uh, I think I shared with you last week, we got an update on either Thursday, yeah, it was Thursday night for new updates. On how they're gonna perform everything, but what is supposed to happen is people are then notified what's going on in the school that are related to that. Uh, unfortunately or fortunately, we're in a small town where people, you can't single out people, we're not gonna share names, I don't know the names. Uh, the county won't share names, but they'll tell us, for example, this class has it, or somebody in this class has, and that will be part of the school, yes. Yeah, and, and we'll publish that as soon as, as soon as we get more protocol from the state, I hate to say absolutely, there might be some other parts. That's where the problem starts, is they have an idea, and then different lawyers get involved, and different departments get involved, and things happen to change.
Mr. Hackett?
Yes.
I'm all in favor of the whole of their students. However, will the parent, does, still wants to distance learn their children? Do they have that option? Because, you know, maybe I can do a little more successful holding my children there. Will they have that option to distance learn and that?
Yes, everybody has that option.
Okay, because then that leaves a dollar option.
Mr. Chair, question two.
Yes. Go ahead.
So, John, do you know, I can see them contacting, right, so if, if the person who does, who gets COVID in the class, I would imagine for sure, everybody in the class would be notified with. So let's say something happens in elementary, does that mean you're gonna contact everybody in the high school as well? Or do you, you don't know that answer?
I, I do not know that answer yet. First, first thing that happens is somebody might have a symptom for the disease, that doesn't mean they have the disease. So their first step is they go home, they're supposed to be quarantined, the next day they feel fine. You know, it might have been something they ate, so we're not gonna notify people on that. Hey, they, they look like they might have it for a couple days, it could be a simple flu, the recommendation is get in and get tested. And because they're quarantined, if it's positive, the, the old protocol said then we need to notify the class. And then the class would monitor those things, it's not a rush drug, and they move from there. But even with that, some of that has changed.
Yes?
So, if my child has these symptoms and she needs to be out of class, and she's gonna have to have a COVID test in order to come back to class? Or can I offer her to be ready more than later?
That, that one's a good question, again, I'm not sure where we are with that right now, but again, immediately that would not, not carry anything. It's up to you to watch your own child.
Right.
And check on your own child and make sure she's okay. That, that is a parental right that you have, you don't have to take them in to get tested, that would be on you.
Would it be if we send people for the ten days and the person would be like, they're gonna be up?
Only, only if they're tested positive. Okay, so if you kept them home, hopefully you wouldn't send them back if they had any symptoms. You know?
Some parents do send their kids to school, but I don't know, I don't know.
I totally agree with you, and that's, that's why I keep saying, how long we're open is gonna be up to everybody in this community. Because if you're sending your kid to school sick, it's, it affects all of us, it affects the teachers, it affects the staff, it affects every student in this school. And that's why it's so very, very important that we monitor our kids. And originally, you know, uh, we talked about monitoring at the door, things have changed since then. You monitor your own child, you're responsible for your own child. Temperatures are down the list, it's something that came out early in June from John Hopkins, that's one of the last signs. But some of the other ones, like you lose your taste. Some of, some of the things with it are very flu-like, symptoms are like, yeah, but losing that taste would be different.
This is something that's gonna take a community, uh, parents, teachers, employers, gonna have to try to be understanding, because, yeah. I mean, everybody's gotta go to work too, and get it, and we gotta try to keep kids home when they're sick, and we all gotta try to do it together. Because the kids in the school is where they need to be, and as a community, we gotta, we gotta put that forward, because that's important, so. Go ahead.
I, I think the other thing to, to John's point, like, if something like that happens in my teacher's, you know, I think that's gonna be an option. I think as a district, we're gonna ask that, um, try not to switch lock in rate, because that can be disruptive to the kids and not help your child, the kids in class, who's right. But, who knows, right, if something like this happens, I think that always has to be an option, that you can take your child out and decide to distance learn.
Yes? Yes?
I have a question. Are we allowed to, on the, the, she went to move her attendance, helping her classroom? Are we on the safety side for a couple days? And then would that, would that help?
I, I think we want to be careful that people aren't jumping in, jumping out, jumping in, jumping out. It takes some time to set up distance learning for them, and by the time you get set up. But if, if she has high anxiety and stuff, that's also a sickness. And that's one thing that we can look at is absentee for you as a parent. You can have your child at home, certainly.
I think it's parents can, if you want to, if parents have, um, okay. But even if it's, it's wrong, just because if we keep following the instructions, we're not going to stay there, it's a A online. I don't, kind of, I'll put it that way. Um, because I mean, it's definitely, it's, it's all over. You know, I heard, I don't know if it is a, you know, it's, you know, it's not always. But you've got something out there, you've got to get it through. So, that.
Yeah, there, there, there's that balance, and, oh.
Okay. Go ahead. We're having a hard time hearing. The, the question, I imagine you're good. The question is, is, um, what are we going to do about absenteeism? So, that's what we're talking about.
Sure, I'm trying to read. I think probably to answer your question and everybody else's question that's in their mind, it would be helpful to have an administrator go through the steps involved in that quick switch that you're talking about, so that you know what you need to do. And maybe you could replant it, so that if that came up, you can seamlessly go into that and back out. But there may be quite a few steps that you have to do to get into it. So, any administrators, welcome to walk us through what it takes to go from in-person to distance, and then back to in-person when you're closer.
In the, in the short term, it's our plan. Um, what we don't want is every Friday, forty-five open hours are going on. We can distance learn, right? It can be planned for lunches, but if they're not there. Um, in the case of that, Julie, you told me, and you were called the office and say, hey, my kid is feeling good, he's going to stay home for a couple days. We'll mark that down. So, we have to be reasonable and supportive of the tenants. We hold a pretty high standard for tenants. It's got to be, um, but I think we need to take the threat away from the tenants that parents basically doesn't, remember the family. Yeah, and I would rather, I have been at the time, a parent that's, or kind of, I think you get impossible, and, and by default, I have probably air to the side of, if you're at school. And I think we need to change that mindset of airing out the side of it. You probably should keep that.
That, that's what I was trying to say. I just worry that this could be my oldest, if her parents, she doesn't like it at all. Just, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm fine, if you know. And that's because of the whole school, the shooting, right? Where if I catch that shooting, I'm off. I'd rather get a little supportive of it.
Yeah.
And make sure to plan that, since you got, but then they won't be able to leave this. And that's, that's what we, we, we.
So, our distance learning goes in parallel with their live streaming. So, teachers are live streaming at times, so it's, it's only a model. And if each of their social places, they didn't see what's going on in the classroom, and possibly you could take part of it. We're working on recording it, because you also have the kids, like, six. Their behavior may be a lot, and they feel better, so that you can log in, and you can go to the classroom to check out, recording it, the instruction, you know, homework, sparkles, try to make it as user interchangeable, and use their friends and just keep talking.
Yeah, go. All right. Yep. Thank you for the question. Is there any other questions on this? All right. I'm going to call the help. It was moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Petron, to schedule more in-person schooling for the twenty twenty-one year to start. Any other discussion? All of them or say aye?
Aye.
All who oppose? All who abstain? Motion passed six zero zero. We thank the administration and teachers for all their hard work that they've put through this summer to make this happen. Go ahead, Joel.
I would, the other thing I would, if there's a parent, if there's a product there is, this is all for us on this side as well, and we're, we're, hey, I'm having this going on. What do you think? I mean, if someone calls me, I'm going to try to, and point them in a direction that helps both students, family, and school to have a great year together.
Okay. Protocols for unsafe schools.
Well, and then, can you go back to that PowerPoint again, please? There's an up to the top again. What we've done is put together the plan. Matter of fact, when I just asked the committee to go through, through things, I did not ask the three board members, who are also on the committee, because they're here. Put together a plan with all the parts we talked about. Matter of fact, a couple of people, when I asked them which way they were leaning on this, they said, you know, this is all the stuff you've gone through, and you made adjustments. I said, I know, that's why we had meetings and stuff. What I tried to do is looking at other webpages, instead of having a massive long book, is that you can go over, for example, Susan, go to the left side in elementary learning. And this, this webpage isn't completed yet, I sent out a different one. But I asked Joy Mooney, who's done a fantastic job, to put together scenarios like this, so people can see what each thing means. When, when the high school is in, uh, hybrid, there's a very good possibility, and you can see that number at the right, ten to nineteen, that's, that's when the possibility of the elementary would go, because the rate of passing it on is slower. I'm just giving you an example, can you go back to the original page then? So, there are different things. For example, yeah, go ahead, hit that one, although I found a correction we're going to have to make. So, you can see here, yeah, in person is the same, go to hybrid, please. But now they're in a hybrid and a whole different scenario. And there it goes, grades, uh, grade six through eight, Monday, Tuesday, distance learning, three days a week, and this is very common across the state. And grades nine, twelve, they're going to school two days and out. You want to go back up to the top, back to the original? So, there are different parts we also implanted in this. Slow down slowly, see if I can find another book. Increased daily disinfectant, click on that one, please. Oh, it was down there embedded.
Oh, I hear you.
Yep. To give you an example, so we embedded things in there. Go ahead, click it. And so, we talked about that. Somebody asked the other day, right now, Sony DeValas is looking at very powerful cleaners to clean off tables, desks, and everything that is zero hazard, zero everything. Uh, there is, it's citric base, which is citric acid, which comes out of your vegetables, not your vegetables, your fruits. Uh, that, that is the main, main thing used. But we have it on everything. See, we have other things that go onto it. Uh, go ahead, hit face mask. So, we have to, by law, follow face masks. You're wondering, what are some of the exceptions on it? You go in here and see exceptions on it, because there are times, and there are individuals that don't, can't have face masks on, or shouldn't have face masks on. And I, I've been asked that question, I think both principals have been asked that question several times. This information is there. Also, there are times that you temporarily can move it off. What do you need i- if you do not? You know, your, your child can't have a face mask, just bring us a medical slip that says it. Um, it should be from your M D, or, or, I'm trying to think of a respiratory therapist, somebody like that. It should be from your vet area. Well, I say that because you should see some of the examples that are out there from the CDC and other people, and it's unbelievable. But we have to have these rules in place to make it work. Go ahead, go back to the original page. Transportation, we're still working on. If you go down to the transportation on the left side, up, 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 yep. And it's also embedded. You should be able to click on transportation at the top there. And there it is. So, you can see whatever, everything's there. The page is not complete, but it'll go up tomorrow to finish it up. All right. And back to the beginning again. The one I was trying to get to, which I don't know if she's got embedded yet, but when I shared this with people, I had it working different. Go ahead, go down, and she's trying to do it very, I mean, she's outstanding with what she does. Uh, we talked about communication there, the different ways to, how we get to different places. I was looking for the one with scenarios. Go ahead, continue down. Right there, she's embedded, and it tells you what scenario we're in each, every single case. And then again, it goes back to the other scenario, up, 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 up. Okay, right there, number of cases per ten thousand. We're at three, three thousand, some in Morrison County. Uh, but again, it goes back to local, and where are we? Uh, right now, we were at, what did I say? Five, five point twelve cases, active cases per ten thousand. So, we're well below. But the scenario is ten to nineteen. You can see elementary students hybrid, secondary, pardon me, secondary is hybrid, elementary is normal, just go down. I've had a chance to proofread it, but I wanted to give you a sample. Any questions?
I do. What are we doing for the nap? It's a good drop off.
I would go to fill on that one. Where are we with nap fill?
Well, you say drop off.
Yeah, we've gotten, we've gotten parents to, to say to drop off kids, but one of the biggest hurdles I've heard of is, um, the narrow window to drop them off and even nap and stuff. So, nap is open at the morning, six thirty, until eight o'clock. Pretty good window there. And otherwise, families are not going to be in that, they should drop off at eight o'clock. But if some come a little early, it's very flexible, from seven forty-five to eight, you have the kids in the cafeteria, and then go to their classes, because there's not many coming in that fifteen window for cases, set them up. That's, but this is a pretty good window for naps, starting at six thirty. And otherwise, we're going to parent drop off at eight. Couldn't get more strict about it, but just been flexible with it since the beginning. But I wasn't going to change all of that now. So, I think, well, the only problem would be double the amount of people dropping off at eight, they're coming in like twenty to eight. So, there has to be some barrier there. It just works well, parents are pretty good about it, they try to expect that at eight o'clock. And sometimes it's. Russ, sit here, read my line.
Oh, I'm just going to ask still, what, if you've got ideas, what you're going to do for the high school kids?
Um, we're looking at, uh, and then for the, either the community centers, um, both areas, right? And then, right before, so the distance is not always, that's a, that's a plan right now. I'm hoping if you do it at the time, it's, um, we're still, I guess, we're just.
Father Joel, please.
And then we'll go to media center, if we have to, or the cops. Seven thirty. Sorry.
I have a question. Second question? No.
Just wondering, at some point, if I could go back to that previous question about in and out of distance learning.
Yeah.
And in class. Just, I want to share from elementary perspective.
Yep.
We're doing, you would consider guideline or not? Please make sure it is. Say, for example, there are three students in a grade level that are just learning. Putting those three students with the same teacher, rather than one in each teacher or grade level. So, that class hoping to be live streaming, but those other two classes are not. So, if someone in one of those other classes suddenly says, I want to distance learn now, we are not ready to let the next day, who's going to distance learn? I know from the teacher's perspective, having some time under a month, quarter, where parents declaring, I want to distance learn, knowing that if you do that, this next period of time, you're going to be distance learning, then you'll have an opportunity to come back, because it's going to have to be preparation. Get ready. We can't have people drop, you know, jump back and forth between, every two years.
That's, that's exactly what I was wanting people to hear. If you could even get into the nuts and bolts of, you've got to have a computer that's internet capable, that can receive the streaming, and you've got to have these materials that go through, if you go through that type of thing, then it will help people make a decision if they know what else is involved in that, too.
Well, we're learning as we go, but there will be live streaming. Basically, elementary, I don't see a six, seven hours a day, but three, four times, lessons are being introduced, focused on the core subjects. And teachers are teaching, either pre-record or record as they're teaching. Chair holds, there'll be assignments given in a period of time where students in the classroom will be given some work to work on, or probably getting to work. Getting back and forth.
Any other questions in the back?
Yeah. Oh, I think, um, they, um, they're not, they're, they're, people that are, um.
No, I mean, that's, that's not a parent choice, that's a work, which, then we have to test. And we need to, your parent, how does that?
Phil, just a second. Dr. Gubata?
Yeah.
Another break, other question. So, the question was, if, if a child would happen to test positive, then, okay, go ahead.
That is different from just choosing to jump back and forth in between learning models, and we would accommodate that as quickly as possible.
And that's someone being sick. That's someone being sick any time. Yeah.
Yeah. And this is something that'll probably get better two months from now than it is right now, after it happens once or twice. I mean, right now, they're just dealing in theoreticals, and they can't even come up with all the things that could happen. So, that's what I asked for patience in the beginning, and I think that's, everybody in this, in this district's going to have to have some patience. It's not going to go off perfectly, but we're going to try to get it to go off, so. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, the other part of that is not everybody is connected to the internet, nor can they be. That is the toughest thing in rural Minnesota, rural any points. And unlike electricity, it's very similar to electricity, what, before World War Two, and the Tennessee Valley Association, everything else that goes with that. Yeah. Internet should be a right, every, everybody has a right to. And right now, we don't. So, what do we do with those? And we're scrambling, because we, you can have a hotspot, and that doesn't even work. I know, I just talked to a family the other day about that. They have hotspots, they've tried, they're on their fifth type of connection, and it still doesn't connect where they are. So, that's where the teacher has to work. That's where I think Phil made some great decisions and ideas of taking, and let's see what they need and work around it, to have one person in charge of that. Um, we're also exploring some other ways to do that.
You have a question?
Yeah.
I would say. I would say notify, right now, we had the survey and we made phone calls. But then if you haven't chose that, go in and notify the principal at that grade level. As Phil said, in his grade levels, what he's already done is they've been assigned into one teacher. All of them, and that teacher has a different caseload in person plus the distance part. In the high school, it's a whole different ballgame because they have multiple teachers. So the sooner they know, more they can work with them.
You put a lot of the survey.
You probably got a phone call then. What? Did you get a phone call?
No, she did both, she said. She did the original one where we made estimates. If you remember, the first one we put out, it was over 20% that said they'd distance learn. So we put in a day of Wednesday where it'd be a regular in-person would be two days in. Distance learners could come in and meet in the school and then two days back again, but distance learner had that Wednesday. When it dropped below 10% on the final decision, that's when we said it's less than 10%. But let's set, set it up different.
I guess you can see me if you have a question. Hopefully, we have.
Okay, we can move on. Kathy?
Yeah, we have a problem. How many people are actually remaining their kids in school that cares for last year or coming year? I just can see this warning. Big, big problem. Eighty percent of the parents are dropping off their kids around the end of the year or four days.
We've got as close to statistics as we can. That's why we asked, and it also galeen, and we started doing phone calls for them. That's why it's so important. Some people figure, well, I'm going to drop off my kid, I don't have to answer. When we started to have some parents out there during the week, last week calling, there were over 535 kids that accounted for. That parents had made that connection. So galeen, that Joel put out another message. And she's trying to put together routes. But this also sadly happens every year to her, that people will call the day before school and said, what bus route is my child in? And she goes, I didn't know your child needed busing. There's a, we, we don't have ESP. We can't foresee that, but.
Are you concerned about the number of kids kept in the area or?
Yeah, that's what she's concerned about.
Yeah.
Well, we might have to make adjustments. Definitely has a problem. Say, first, we could look to lay the.
I really think.
They all leave at once. Just kind of more, you know, close against our, uh, fifteenth, fifteenth and fourth grade.
Yes.
Now we've got. When there's a hundred kids, they're all like, oh, leave at the same time?
No. I don't think we're going to. Starting the galeen, the bus percentage of kids, trying to bus, busing the class here. And we will have the kids spread out. I won't be able to get this mess by cable or grade, however, we can do it. So there won't be any of that.
It's the same way at the end of the school day, too. I'm, I'm keeping them spread out all day long.
Okay, Dawn?
I just want to say that I did talk to Gail on Friday, I don't know if anyone else, but she has her routes finished. To what we have in place as of Friday. So I guess if there's changes, we know way sooner than later. Because I think we have established the rules to go along.
All right. Can we move on then?
Uh, if we could have a motion.
You got to, you got to pass the protocols?
Yeah, the protocols for the scenarios.
Right.
And then we'll keep adding to that page as we discover more things. Like the protocols for when you keep the kid home, when are we notified, all those different pieces.
All right. Somebody want to make that, move that?
I'll make the motion.
It was moved by Director Hall, consecutively by Director Lang to approve the protocols as of today to run safe schools. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Allo abstain. Motion passes 600.
And I want to thank all of the discussion that helps give us more insight. All attention.
The exclusive sub policy. This is in Subway, it's a $5 bill on. But this is, uh, last year, we put into policy that we tried to get some subs to, to frequent the school more often. And administration feels that it would be a good policy to up, up it to level three. Is that what it is?
It's our level tier two.
Tier two, there it is.
Uh, try to have exclusive.
Try to get.
So our, our subteachers are here and they won't teach in another school. And that's what this agreement does. But at the same time, we need a resolution that says we're making an exception to the policy we have now. To start people in tier two if they're willing to sign this. And this is what our, like I said, our lawyer, I was asked to put it together by our lawyer. He got back to me, I think it was Thursday. I wanted Dawn to have an opportunity to look at it. And we went through it, I shared it with you, I think on Thursday, was it? Or Sunday? I can't remember, Sunday, I think I shared it with you on Sunday.
So being this is a resolution, I get to read this whole thing?
No, you don't have to, I don't think, but. Russ has a question.
Yeah. So. Maybe you need a substitute teacher that's going to sign this. They're going to like to see the tier two ready. Right, I wouldn't say, yeah, that's great, great, I mean, go and grow up and maybe a couple of months extra, but they're going to need to be signed this and say that I'm going to sub here. I think it's a, so then what, so let's see your face. Right, so see, I'll come and sub today, but I'm not going to sign.
Then they're in tier one.
Okay.
Yep, then they're just in tier one. And they work, and as we've said before, we had one of our long-term subs before, I think last year, actually made more money. Because you made it into tier two. Oh, made it into tier three, excuse me.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, on paragraph two, it says the district policy provides substitute teacher with five daily assignments. It's been sixty days of the execution. If they don't, they're still going to pay the teacher for five.
If that's what it says, they're down, yes. That was something Dawn and I went through.
So. No matter what, even if they don't get any assignments, they're still going to get the kids. So I would draw someone towards it. But, um, how much did we spend on substitute teachers last year?
Um, with COVID, I think it's something like. Fifty, fifty thousand?
$50,000 on substitute teachers. I don't think we'll have any problem giving five.
No.
Sixty days.
And, and that was actually much lower than yours though, because COVID.
It's down from 185 now.
Yes.
I, I think it would be fair to assume that happens because the students and teachers is going to be higher. You're going to, you're going to have a culture of staying home when you're not feeling 100%. It almost has to be, so. Yep. All right. Any other questions? Let's move to approve it.
I'll say. And this one actually takes the resolution because it changes for emergency only, it changes our policy.
And, and so then once the peacetime emergency is lifted, this policy will be null and void.
Correct. And then we don't have to do two votes on it if we make a resolution except this, as is.
Okay, so I'm not going to read the whole thing, but we're voting on a peacetime emergency substitute teacher agreement. As, as illustrated on board book as of this date. So got a bunch of whereas in it. Some signatures bottom, so. Second. All right. Um, we got.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, it's a resolution. All right. Director Lang? This is. Director Garrett?
Aye.
Director Hall?
Yes.
Director Hackett?
Aye.
Director Gerard?
Aye.
Director Petron?
Aye.
Resolution's passed 600. All right. Moving on to donations, we got two donations around the school district and to the Ryleton community at. I believe that's what it is. Um, I got the one for a hundred dollars. From the Ryleton Women's Study Club has generously offered to donate a hundred dollars to the Ryleton School District for books. Somebody want to use that?
I'll make their motion.
I'll say. Member Petron introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Ryleton Women's Study Club has generously offered to donate a hundred dollars to the Ryleton School District. Whereas the conditions on this gift are for use in book of cost. Therefore, being resolved by the Ryleton School Board to gratefully accept the gift. Motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Member Gerard. And upon a roll call vote being taken thereof, the call is voted for. All right. Director Lang?
Aye.
Director Garrett?
Aye.
Director Hall?
Aye.
Director Gerard?
Aye.
Director Petron?
Aye.
Director Hackett?
Aye.
So the vote, they're in favor of is Lang, Garrett, Hall, Gerard, Petron, and Hackett. And the following vote of the guests, no one. Following abstain, no one. Foregoing resolution approved 600. This tool. Twenty-fourth day of August, 2020. All right. Another one. We got $2,000 donated by Langola Township for community ed summer recreation. Want to introduce that?
I'll say.
Member Gerard introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas the Township of Langola has generously offered to donate $2,000 to the Ryleton School District. Whereas the conditions on this gift are for use in the community ed summer recreation. Therefore, being resolved by the Ryleton School Board to gratefully accept the gift. Motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Member Petron. And upon a roll call vote being taken thereof, the call is voted. Director Lang?
Aye.
Director Garrett?
Aye.
Director Hall?
Aye.
Director Hackett?
Aye.
Director Gerard? Gerard?
Aye.
Director Petron?
Aye.
In favor thereof, Lang, Garrett, Hall, Hackett, Gerard, and Petron. And the following voted against this, no one. Following voted, uh, following abstained, no one. The foregoing resolution approved 600. It's twenty-fourth day of August, 2020. All right, number done.
Gerard?
Yes.
Uh, I was at the Township Board meeting the other day.
Yep.
And they've got some money. It's COVID related. And they came up, they, they talked about community ed at Ryleton. They had any needs or any money that's COVID related, they would be willing to donate more money. To something else. Well, that was just, the reason it came up was because they had donated some money or any of the community ed, they would ask, so.
Yeah, and thank you for the book club and for the, uh. The Township for, for donating.
The Township also has a bunch of masks. Five, 10,000 masks. And so if anybody needs masks, they'll go to Township.
Are they all the dogs?
I don't know, they're, I did so, they're the 95 ones.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. Future meetings. What is our meeting schedule coming up?
It was a fact. Sometimes I see.
So our next meeting, one of the things that I'd ask for here is for the, uh. Our, I've got to get to the right month. Anyway, to change our meeting for the policies from the eight, which is the first day the school opens, to either the first or the 15. That would be for you. Chair, uh, not chair, board member Lang, chair Hackett, and vice chair Gerard. That'd be next Monday already.
Does that work for you, Mary? It works. All right.
Same time, eight thirty.
The first is opening here.
Well, that's all.
You should have all done.
So the next meeting, we'll just remember.
Okay, I did not sign, um, uh, sorry, in the 28th of September, someone picture you get to the worst and you have a plan.
So like, the Wednesday, the next.
The eighth, ninth?
If it's one's voice, right? Someone else can hear.
For me, it's, it's. Yeah. I'm good with that, that's happened, I'm not on the public table. Not on John's schedule, but I don't even said that. How about the 10th? Or the 11th? Or the next week? This is obviously before the on first month, because I want us to be in, have a plan. So the next, before the 28th of September.
Are you ready to meet or ready to opt?
Yeah.
So if I.
I'm here all week.
You're not going here.
Um, I think, uh. Oh, I don't know.
You want to argue on finance?
You guys.
I just have a. Let's see.
We'll do it by.
Yeah, I'll just see now.
All right, so I have Tuesday, September 1st, and Monday, September 28th. Meetings. Anything else? Not moving on to the MAP program? Do you want to speak to that or?
If you feel comfortable that we've covered that already.
I'm good with it. All right, going on to the handbooks. Handbooks are out online.
No, they're not, they're waiting for your approval.
They're waiting for.
The only one I just. Sorry, but I did see on, on the high school one, it does talk still about seven periods. And I don't know if you want to change that for, or what to change. And start for COVID. That was the only thing that I had in mind. I don't have a future. Trying to change. If something comes out of this that's permanent going forward. We have been, we did there, but right now, I would say. Um, that might change. Things in the handbook, not on the book, but yes.
Flower, please. Sorry.
Joel doesn't, he's not going to change the handbook, it, uh, he's going to leave it this way for this year, expecting that the following year, it's going to reverse back into the seventy period, or you're making decisions, maybe, maybe this block scheduling recreating, and you'll have to.
All right.
That's for everybody, and so that you repeated that, thank you.
Does anybody want to draw the hand?
I will make a motion to move.
It's moved by Director Garrett, and seconded by Director Gerard, to approve the elementary school, middle school, and high school handbooks, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All who abstain. Motion passes six zero zero. All right, moving on to item all, formative evaluation.
Trying to set a date for that, Ellen?
Yeah, we should set a date to start.
Who made the last motion?
I made the motion, Joel second.
Garrett and Gerard. Monday, September twenty-eighth is a regular board meeting at six o'clock.
Your contract says.
Yep. Does that?
Means this week? Or Monday next week?
What's that?
Thirty-first.
Well, any ideas?
I'm good on the inter, you know, Monday works well for me.
Thirty-first, which is Monday's okay.
All right. Time?
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. Everybody's good with that?
Thanks for bringing that up.
Very happy.
Been so busy.
All right, and then, uh, item P, the policy test?
Nah, I, I haven't worked on it this last month, you know what it's been worked on, but it will be done this September, matter of fact, I'm hoping to have it put out to the, the teachers to start working on when you come back and workshop it, which is next month.
A good thing for the board members to get it.
Yeah.
Board members.
Okay. Yes, Donna?
I just want to, you know, I want to remind you that September's, I'm aware of that, the lucky, every September, it's not like, up to you guys' mind.
Yep. All right. So for upcoming meeting schedule, we have, uh, August thirty-first at six o'clock, uh, formative evaluation, Tuesday, September first for eight thirty AM, policy, and Monday, September twentieth for a regular board meeting, and a, a finance meeting is going to get scheduled, so. All right?
Can you drive the train?
All right. Is there anything else anybody wanted to say? Anything else? Oh, that'd be great. Is there a second for that? Moved by Director Gerard, and seconded by Director Hall to adjourn the meeting, is there any discussion? Hearing none, meeting, uh, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero at seven thirty-four. You agree?